Being the order, please take roll.
Harrington.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Pollock.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Wason.
Here.
Thank you. The agenda's before you, no changes, additions, deletions, a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Swearing in before they're sworn at elected and reelected officials.
Who would you like to start with, Tracy?
I'd like to go first.
Eric?
Eric.
The red dot, so historically we've used the red dot. Raise your hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Mayor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the Office of City Councilor.
Of the Office of City Councilor.
In North Liberty, Iowa.
In North Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Raise your hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Mayor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
That I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the Office of City Councilor in North Liberty, Iowa.
Of the Office of City Councilor in North Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Name.
Chris Hoffman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
That I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all of the duties.
Of the Office of Mayor in North Liberty, Iowa.
Of the Office of Mayor in North Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Now for the fun part of the evening. Consent agenda, any items on there that you would like to discuss ahead of time? If not, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now's the time for public comment. For anyone here wishing to say, speak on something? Hearing none, call that part to a close. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of projects to report on. Ranch Way Phase Five, so we've still got some good weather. So they are still working out there, working around the tunnel, putting all the walls in. And they're finishing up on all the storm sewer intake on the outside lanes. We're hoping to get that done this week, because we've still got some good weather. If they do that, there's an outside chance they may open up the outside lanes later on this winter. Or at least gives us the option to do that, if needed, which would be good. Centennial Park Loop Road, they've got everything done now, except the, you know, the final grading and seeding and plantings in the spring. So they got all that done. We're real happy with that. And Dubuque Street Phase One, we received bids last week, that's on the agenda tonight for consideration. The pool heater replacement, the indoor pool was reopened yesterday. And City Hall project, continuing to work on the design. The next milestone is what we call the design development supplemental, it's about sixty percent done. So we're going to submit that to city staff for review on this Friday. And then we'll have review meetings with city staff to follow in January. Before we proceed with the final construction document phase, which is planned to be completed in April. And then we're going to sit on it and kind of wait and kind of gauge the bidding climate. And we hope to bid it around the August timeframe. And then lastly, the Forever Green Road Trail Project, that one we did a final walkthrough a week and a half ago, and they're substantially completed. So we're real happy with the work that they did on that project. And that's all I have tonight, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for Kevin?
Kevin or Ryan, so is the Loop Road in Centennial, is it open or is it closed?
It's closed.
And it, will it remain closed for the winter?
It's going to be closed throughout the winter.
Okay. Have we had discussions with PD to address the issues that have come to our mailboxes as of late?
We have, and in fact, I was just talking to Councilor Wason about, prior to the meeting. We have, and we followed up with the resident as well. And there are some cameras out there now that will help us, hopefully help us.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, Ryan?
Okay, just a couple of quick hitters from me, but then I'm going to turn it over to Russ, because he's excited to update the folks. You folks on a comprehensive, on a comprehensive plan. I just wanted to remind folks, mainly our viewing public, that we will not be having a second meeting in December. And we will be posting our holiday hours, if they're not already posted actually online. But we'll be closed the Thursday, Friday of Christmas week. And the Thursday, Friday the following week as well, city offices will be. So, and with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan, and he can share what's going on with the comp plan.
Thank you very much. Still at the beginning phases of the rewrite, so a lot of data collection, early discussion on branding and public outreach. The advisory group is formed. We had our first meeting in November. We have a, I think we have a great group of people. Councilor Harrington is part of our group. I see Mike Bale's out there too, he is as well. So it's a, I think, a good group of people and just basically introductions, but I thought we had a great meeting at that first one. So, and a good representation, I think, is going to be able to broadcast and communicate what's going on with the boards and commissions and city councils. Let's see. With the Help Advisory Committee, we named the comprehensive plan connected to tomorrow, so fitting with our connected to what matters. Working with the group to finalize a vision survey, which is a list of twenty-five questions, pretty easy to fill out. Getting ready for the comp plan website to be launched, it's currently soft-launched at this point. Community Roundtable, and that'll be the first public event, will be January nineteenth. And this, this meeting offers North Libertarians a formal opportunity to learn about the comp plan and give some initial input on opportunities or places that we can improve. There's also going to be other events around the nineteenth, listening sessions with the city administration and department heads, landowners, businesses, and community leaders. Reached out to the high school and thought, if there's an exercise that we could do with student council or a leadership team, would they be open to that? They were very receptive to that, so we'll have those consultants come in for a couple of days and we'll really jam-pack those couple of days. And, and you know, also relying on events where you don't, so we're going to be trying to solicit public input throughout this whole process, right? You can't always rely on people to come to meetings, because not everybody does, people are busy. So also planning on going out to events where people are and see if we could get, you know, take a couple of questions here or there, like Beat the Bidders, one of them. Lose Barbecue and those types of events that we can just come to. Maybe it's quick, right, because people don't have a lot of time, but those are the ideas that we're talking about. Obviously, we're working with Nick and the communications team, how to broadcast all of this. And so, obviously I'll have more to come, and if it's okay with incoming Mayor Hoffman, I'll plan on giving more updates as we, as we get further along.
Russ? Please.
Two questions. With the high school, are you, are you doing Liberty and Clear Creek coming in on?
You know, I reached out to Liberty, but I don't see why we wouldn't reach out to Clear Creek.
Okay, great, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Sure. And then for going out to groups, the seniors, like those once-a-month lunches, kind of that were started. And I'm actually not sure if they're back in person or not, but I think that would be a great group, just so we don't forget kind of that population of folks in North Liberty.
Absolutely. Love it. Thank you.
I think the neighborhood ambassadors would, even if it's a short four or five question survey, would probably be able to solicit, aside from just us pushing something out, and I can certainly, you know, talk to Nick about that too. But I think that at least our ambassadors and a couple from around my area are quite active, especially on the social media and email listservs for HOAs and such, so maybe that's a great group.
And we do have one neighborhood ambassador on our advisory committee, so we were trying to be strategic about then being able to broadcast and communicate to other groups, but absolutely, cool.
Any other questions for Ryan? Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have anything more, Ryan?
No.
Okay. Mayor's report, no real report, except I appreciate the reception this evening, and I know Annie does. If you want to make any comments about it, you're welcome to.
Sure, just appreciate everyone coming out this evening. I know I didn't speak during the reception. It's been an honor to serve with all of you and the community of North Liberty on council over the last seven years. And looking forward to see what comes next. So I'm very excited the comprehensive plan is underway, because that's been something near and dear to my heart, kind of since I've been on here. So it's been a privilege to serve, it's been an honor, and just excited to see the city continue and grow the way it is, and be excited to see what we're not even thinking about today. So thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Moving ahead, voting precincts. Before we start the public hearing, do you want to just give a brief overview of why it's occurring?
Sure. So, as we discussed a little bit at the last meeting, this is a requirement that the reprecincting is a requirement of the law, that we do this after the census is approved, or census is finalized. And there are certain timeframes within that, so after the state approves it, then we have, I think it was sixty days or, yeah, sixty days to approve this. Well, everything was pushed back and delayed this year, and so we just didn't have a lot of time to move on this. So what's in front of you has to be approved by January third, I believe is the date. And so what is in front of you is reprecincting according to what we're calling MAP E, which is what the county Otter's Office put together for us. And then that map is articulated in the ordinance, you can see it's very detailed. And many thanks to, many thanks to Sarah Dorman and the Planning Department, who put this text together for us. But it has to be spelled out like that in the ordinance, so we're asking you to consider all three readings this evening, or condensed readings, I should say.
Thank you. Now's the time for a public hearing regarding the proposed voting precinct revisions. Anyone present wishing to speak in regards to that item? Anyone present wishing to speak in regards to that item? Do we have any communication from any other source?
Nothing was received.
Thank you. We'll call the public hearing to a close. We have first consideration of ordinance number twenty-two-one-nine-teen. An ordinance amending voting precincts within chapter six-point-zero-seven of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances. Anyone wish to establish that first reading?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Tracy?
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
First consideration passes five affirmative, none opposed. Now I'm asking for a motion to consider waiving the requirement of three separate readings on three different dates. Anyone wish to establish that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Tracy, take roll on this one, please.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Motion passes, five affirmative, none opposed. Second consideration of ordinance number twenty-two-one-nine-teen. An ordinance amending the voting precincts within chapter six-point-zero-seven of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances. Anyone wish to establish that second consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Tracy?
Harrington?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Second consideration passes five affirmative, none opposed. This will now be the third and final consideration on adoption of ordinance twenty-one, twenty-two-one-nine-teen. An ordinance amending voting precincts within chapter six-point-zero-seven of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances. Anyone wish to consider the third and final?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or comments? Yes?
Just as a, as a little reminder, we generally do not do this unless it's really needed, and this is one of the few instances where it's needed.
Thank you for your comment, that's well put. Tracy?
Wason?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Third and final consideration passes five affirmative, none opposed. Okay. Bowman Property LLC Rezoning. This will be the second consideration of ordinance twenty-two-one-eighteen. An ordinance amending chapter one-sixty-seven of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances by amending the use regulations on property at Northeast Corner, West Forever Green Road, and South Kansas Avenue. Those will be set forth in municipal code for RS four, Single Unit Dwelling District. RS six, Single Unit Dwelling District. RD ten, Two-Unit Residential District. RM eight, Multi-Unit Residential District. RM twelve, Multi-Unit Resident District. And C two A, Commercial District. Anyone wish to establish the second consideration?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Yes?
And that had the switch on those few lots out the corners? Yes.
Tracy, take roll.
Pollock?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Second consideration passes five affirmative, none opposed. This will be policy regarding payables for council meeting, resolution number twenty-two-one-one-twenty. A resolution establishing the policy for the payment of claims due to the cancellation of the second city council meeting in December. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Tracy?
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Urban renewal plan amendment. Want to just give a brief overview on that one?
Yes. So, two meetings ago, we, the city council approved a resolution setting tonight as a public hearing. So that's what you have on the agenda, followed by a couple resolutions. The first is approving the urban renewal plan amendment. And here we're adding two projects into that plan. One is the Civic Campus or City Hall, the other is the North Jones Boulevard project. Simply saying that these two, these two projects are now in the urban renewal plan. The other is a proposal to enter into a general obligation loan agreement. And it's basically giving us the authority down the road to borrow money. This is not obligating us to go out and sell bonds at all, it's just a step in the process to, that will allow us to borrow money in the future.
Thank you. Now's the time for a public hearing on the proposed amendment to the North Liberty Renewal Area. Anyone present wishing to speak in regards to that issue? Anyone present wishing to speak in regards to that issue? Have any communications?
Nothing has been received.
Thank you. Call the public hearing to a close. This will be resolution number twenty-two-one-one-twenty-one. A resolution to declare necessity and establish an urban renewal area pursuant to section four-point-zero-four in the Code of Iowa and approve urban renewal plan amendment for the North Liberty Urban Renewal Area. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Tracy, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Resolution number twenty-two-one-one-twenty-two. A resolution setting the date for a public hearing on proposal to enter into a general obligation urban renewal loan agreement and to borrow money thereunder. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? That's set for January eleventh.
That is correct.
Okay. Questions? Tracy?
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. General obligation proceedings. Swimming pool loan agreement. Would you like to go into that for me?
Yeah, sure, I will. Again, this is money we've already borrowed, and so we're transferring money from one fund to another. Because this was initially borrowed for a fire truck, which is a essential corporate purpose. And spending it on a pool would be a non-essential corporate purpose, we were required to do a little paperwork here. So what this, by moving forward with this, will, we'll be able to transfer some funds. Money between some of our internal funds, making each fund whole by going through these proceedings.
Questions on that one? Okay, now's the time for a public hearing on proposal to enter into a general obligation regarding the swimming pool loan agreement. Anyone present wishing to speak in that regard? Anyone present wishing to speak in that regard? Any outside communications on that?
Nothing has been received.
Thank you. Call the public hearing to a close. You have before you resolution number twenty-two-one-one-twenty-three. Resolution taking additional action on proposal to enter into a general obligation swimming pool loan agreement and repurposing bond proceeds. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? It depends on who you talk to, swimming pool's essential thing. I'm getting tired of it being closed. Okay, Tracy?
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Dubuque Street Phase One Project. You have before you resolution number twenty-two-one-one-twenty-four. A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing execution of the contract for Dubuque Street Phase One Improvements Project, North Liberty, Iowa. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. That was, Kevin, that was the one that we were over on, as far as the bid.
Yes.
Yeah. And looking at those bids, basically it was over by three percent, which is not bad at all under these circumstances, so. Any questions by the group?
We're very familiar with that contractor too. They did the Two Roundabouts project, and they also did the Loop Road project.
Good, good. Any questions? Tracy, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Fire department equipment sale. This is resolution number twenty-two-one-one-twenty-five. Resolution approving the vehicle purchase agreement between the City of North Liberty and the East Orchard Mesa Fire Department, which is located in Colorado. So, anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions?
Just curious, is this a good price we got?
Yeah, we think so. Chief Plots did quite a bit of research before listing it, and feels we got the best bang for our buck here.
And I noticed that we're holding on to it until their next fiscal year, it looks like, so they can pay for it with next year's money.
So that we can use it, because we won't get our, our trouble.
More for our benefit than it is for, yeah, for theirs, okay.
Okay. Tracy, take roll.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Resolution of sale passes five affirmative, none opposed. Commercial drive extension improvement project, resolution number twenty-two-one-one-twenty-six. Resolution establishing fair market value and just compensation for the acquisition of certain property for the commercial drive extension improvement project. You all should have received information of what that fair market price was in your packets. I've been notified about it, correct?
Correct.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions?
Mayor.
Yes?
Just thanks, Russ. We didn't have an opportunity to say it, so thanks for recommending this and bringing this to our attention. It seems the flow, it makes sense, so thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Tracy?
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Employee Handbook, resolution number twenty-two-one-one-twenty-seven. A resolution approving the updated employee handbook. Would you go into that, please?
Yes, it's a very, it's a significant change, but small in terms of how many changes it's one. We're swapping out, or proposing to swap out the Good Friday Holiday with Martin Luther King Junior Day. It's been something that our team has talked about for a while, and so we thought it now is as good a time as any to bring it forward. And we'd like to do it before the year end, so that we can start fresh in a, in a new calendar year.
Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions?
Only thing I would recommend is just that it says Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. That's all.
Okay, yeah, we can make that change, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Tracy, take roll.
Pollock?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Collective bargaining. Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Collective Bargaining Agreement. This will be resolution number 2021-128, resolution ratifying the collective bargaining agreement amendments between the City of North Liberty, Public, Professional, and Maintenance Employees Local 2003 IUPAT for the duration of the next contract. This is a four-year contract. Do you want to go just a little deeper on that one?
Sure, uh, this, the most significant change is, it has been with this union is, uh, the, the updated wages for four years, uh, for the next four years. And so what's being proposed and, uh, what's has tentatively been agreed on by, um, the, the negotiating teams is that it's a, uh, for the next four years, it's two and a half percent, two and three-quarter percent, 3% 3% respectively in each of those years, uh, with a one-time adjustment of the scale in FY '23 of two and a half percent. Uh, this was just a, oh, the thought process here as we reevaluated, uh, comparable wages was that the scale itself needed to jump a little bit. And so that's what we were trying to do there. There was some other minor changes in the language, uh, throughout this contract, uh, that were agreed on by both parties. Nothing of significance, really, just some tweaking from a, uh, administration standpoint, uh, the wages and, uh, the retention, uh, we're not calling it a bonus, but retention payments that are included in there for officers in their third, fourth, fifth, and sixth year. Uh, and I believe that went 3,000, 3,000, 1,500, 1,500, if I, uh, remembered that correctly. Uh, and again, that, the intent there is, uh, we're seeing, uh, we have seen recently, uh, folks leave a little bit earl, or leave early, and a lot of times they might have a contract with us, and other agencies are paying off that contract to get a certified officer. And our hope is that these retention payments will keep them here.
Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion or questions? Tracy?
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Next Domestic Violence Intervention Program, DVIP Social Services Funding Agreement. This is a resolution number 2021-129, resolution approving the social services funding agreement between the City of North Liberty and Domestic Violence Intervention Program. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Those folks were ecstatic when I talked to a couple of their representatives this evening, so.
Good.
You did good.
I, I hope we'll, uh, our communications department can reach out to them and, and be part of the, especially the early stages of that campaign, and so that we, as being leaders, uh, in this campaign can help, uh, them in meeting their goal would be great.
Great point, because we are the first.
Correct.
To give to this campaign of this significance. So I think it's amazing that we, as a city, are doing this. This is an incredible organization doing great work. So we're proud to support them.
You're putting it where it's needed.
And just like Grant know, we appreciate all of his expert legal work that was so complicated, he told us.
Pass that along.
Where we all.
Tongue and cheek, cheek jobber. Okay, any other questions? Tracy?
Smith?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. National Opioid Settlement. This will be resolution 2021-130, resolution opting to participate in the nationwide settlements with opioid distributors McKesson, Cardinal Health, AmerisourceBergen, and opioid manufacturer Janson Pharmaceuticals, Inc. Since Grant and I are here, can we give just a little brief on them?
I was hoping you'd let me play attorney tonight. I tried to prep for this. Uh, yeah, this is, um, in, in Grant's terms, uh, we're, we're kind of jumping on, uh, this lawsuit, uh, to leverage as much funding as we can get, uh, for the state and for the county. And the more people or more, uh, citi, uh, more cities or organizations that are involved, more money that will come to Iowa and, and hopefully the county, uh, to help with this issue specifically, the opioid issue. So, uh, we've, uh, Johnson County has reached out, uh, to us as well to make sure we were going down this path, uh, and of course we were, and so we're recommending, uh, to move forward.
Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Tracy?
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wesson?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Resolution passes five affirmative, none opposed. Old business.
Please continue to be vigilant in this pandemic. Please get vaccinated, wear your mask, do your part. Um, numbers are not what we want to see. So this will be the last time I have an opportunity to say this up here. So please, from a public health standpoint, everyone do your part.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think this is, th- this is old business. Um, uh, co- saying that both of you are wise, not old, not that it belongs to old business.
Watch it.
Okay, so, uh, I, I couldn't let you off the hook to your, your last meeting to sit here and, and be nervous and wonder how long Counselor Smith is going to talk about something, uh, randomly. Uh, so that, I, I want to thank you for your service to the community. Uh, Annie, I want to thank you for your service to the community. I've learned a lot from both of you. Um, in my early days of looking at, uh, joining this team, I had lots of questions, uh, for both of you, and you were both very accommodating, uh, to the young counselor that didn't know much about much of anything. So I really appreciate that, and, uh, I wish you both very well. And you both have my phone numbers, so when you're watching the meetings, uh, don't text me during the meeting, but you can call me after and let me know your opinions, and I will certainly be the voice for you, uh, as I am for the rest of the citizens. So thanks for what you guys have done. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Yes?
So, um, I will kind of piggyback onto that. I just wanted to say, Annie, I appreciate working with you for kind of on and off of, or like eight, nine years now, and I really appreciated your, um, kind of interjecting a little bit of business sense into things because, you know, some of us are more outcome oriented, and, and sometimes we need a little bit of process and stuff, so. And then, uh, Terry, I just wanted to, um, really thank you for, um, your mentorship and leadership over the years. Um, and, uh, we appreciate that, and we've really come a long way, uh, since we've been working together for quite a while. I remember my first, uh, pre-city council meeting was like, was budget time, and you said, "Come on up here and sit down with us," so we could sit down and get talking about stuff. And I really appreciated that. So, congratulations, and.
Thank you.
We appreciate, uh, everything you've done for the city.
And I would not let you guys leave without saying thank you. It has definitely been a pleasure serving on council with you all. Um, I think I've learned a lot. Um, I've enjoyed the conversations outside of here, um, and navigating so mu- so many things, um, with you all. Mayor, I just want to say, you know, over this course of getting to know more about you and your background and the history and the things that you have done, you have invested in your communities that you've lived in, and you have definitely left your footprint there, your stamp, and, um, it's very appreciated, your wisdom, your knowledge, your patience on some, some things, and how you kind of urge us, like, okay, make a decision. So just want to say, appreciate both of you. Um, you've brought so much, and I, like, I, I've learned so much from both of you. So best wishes for whatever's next in, in your journeys.
Thank you.
I was lucky enough to make some remarks, um, before the council meeting. I won't make you cry again. Um, I, I do know how much of a sacrifice it is to be here and not with your family at certain times, especially when your children are young. Um, and we, uh, oftentimes didn't agree on certain things, but I, um, I do really appreciate your commitment and your time, um, and your availability to our residents. Um, they know it, uh, they appreciated that, and, um, you oftentimes heard from people that we wouldn't hear from. So you brought their voice to, to our table. Um, so I'll stop now and not produce more tears. And, um, I think everybody was here, but, um, I did a, a quick, a quick math on the number of meetings that Terry, Ryan, Kevin, and Tracy and I have been a part of since January of 2008, and it works out, if we were all here, which we weren't, to 336 of these suckers that we've, uh, been a part of. So that's a lot of hours and a lot of time. And again, I know the sacrifice that you make, um, in doing this, um, in terms of council, uh, and also being, um, leading us over this, uh, this, this tumultuous last couple of years especially. Um, yeah, it's an end of an era here for us, and I, I, uh, difficult to believe that it's coming to an end, uh, but it's been a long darned time. So go enjoy retirement. Been my pleasure to serve here with you.
Thank you all very much. I must, the other part of the team left. And one for her support, wanting to see me succeed, as well as the city succeed, whether it was Kristen or here. Um, she was a large part of the equation. And so, you know, we just, we're at the time, we kind of want to, uh, reward ourselves in that we're at a place where, again, I don't see that we have any serious problems carrying over the next council. You're in very good position to move ahead and move ahead quickly. So you'll all do fine. All do fine. So the only recommendation that I'm going to make, and this is my last recommendation on anything, when things change in January, I would recommend that you post a special election to fill the seat as quickly as you can, because you're going to have a lot of things coming on your plate just bam, 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 in the near future. So that's my final recommendation. Anything from anybody else?
Uh, yeah, I know you were looking over at that side of the table. We're going to chime in here, uh, at least I am, and I, and anyone else, I guess they want, but I just say it's been a pleasure working with both of you. Been, uh, working in local government for 21 years, worked with a lot of different city councils, city counselors individually and mayors, uh, and have always appreciated. I know where I stand with you two, uh, and I've appreciated, uh, just the communication, the thoughtfulness, and I, I can speak for our team in saying the same. Uh, it's not an easy job to, to, to sit up here and, and sometimes take recommendations on, on, on topics that you, you may not, uh, have a lot of experience in, or you may not care much about in some cases. And, and so we appreciated your time and attention, that you really have made, uh, our jobs, uh, easier, uh, from a staff level. So thank you both. I would just, uh, say one other thing, Mayor. Uh, I, I think I've shared this story with a few other people, but for the first eight years, uh, you were on council, I didn't think you liked me. Uh, maybe you didn't, uh, and maybe you still don't, I don't know. Uh, but as you have, uh, been the mayor, you, I, I have really appreciated our working relationship. Uh, you've been a mentor. I'm going to miss the, I think it goes like, "Hey, kid, what can I do for you today?" Uh, I'm going to miss that on Thursdays. Uh, so thank you, and enjoy.
Anybody else got tissues, things that they want me to comment on? If not, we are adjourned. Enjoy the holidays.